Before we get started with our meeting, we are a little early today, before we get started with the meeting, I want to turn it over to this young lady next to me, as we have been doing over the last several months, we want to begin our board meeting with a word of prayer. Today we have with us, this is Amy Chatten, she is a pastor of Mayles Methodist Church right here in Paintsville, so I'm gonna turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure, and I greet you as a 1993 graduate of Johnson Central High School, and I'm glad to come, oh, thank you! And I'm glad to come to the Lord today on our behalf as we end this school year. So let's go to God in prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we are humbled that you would gather us here and that you would use us so God is your servants. We thank you for this beautiful day, for this end of the school year, God, that you have given us, and we just ask, oh God, that you would be near to us, here who are gathered. We thank you for these hearts that are humbled enough to seek yours, and we ask, oh God, that the mind of Christ would be in this place, would be in these hearts, and that you would allow those who are gathered here, oh God, to hear your voice. You are the good shepherd, and you lead us, oh God, and we thank you for that. We ask that we would not lean on our own understanding, oh God, but in all of our ways, that we would acknowledge you, that we would trust you with our whole hearts, that we would love others as you have loved us. God, give us this mind of Christ, that we may finish this race, may finish this end of this calendar year, may finish it well, and may keep our eyes set on you, Jesus. You are the author and the perfecter of our faith, and it's in your holy name that we gather and we pray. Amen.
Thank you for being here. And like I say, Amy and I are 1993 graduates together.
Yeah, that's right.
By my math, that makes us 29 years old.
Twenty-nine.
I have one more announcement before we get started. As you know, Mr. Easthead vacated Johnson County Middle School principal position in January to move to the board office as a hiring VP. Since that time, Mr. Hall's been serving as interim principal. The side-by-side decision-making council has been meeting over the last few weeks to first to get a principalship training, official training, hiring training, and then to discuss hiring the principal, and I want to announce that they, in a meeting earlier today, they did meet and they hired new principals at Johnson Middle Schools, and I'll be the first to announce, Mr. Sean Hall, add any words of wisdom you'd like to bestow upon us.
I'm good.
That's personal opinion.
Appreciate the support.
Alright, thank you, and I know also that you have district championship baseball game, so if you need to go ahead and go, we will excuse you for that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's at the light, Gus.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll call the Johnson County Board of Education meeting door for May 20, 2019.
To begin the meeting, as we always do, we want to start with the pledge of allegiance. Today, we have one of Johnson High School students, Kobe Little, here to lead us in the pledge, so please stand. Come on up, Kobe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Flag up here, go ahead and state our mission, vision, core values, please.
Alright. Johnson County's mission statement, the ultimate educational experience for every child, every day. Johnson County's vision, an innovative school district focused on learning without boundaries. And their four values, integrity, leadership, commitment, and service.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Tonight, we have several groups of students who we're gonna recognize, and I do apologize, some of these have waited for some time to be recognized, it's just been a scheduling conflict each month, but I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Prun, and he will introduce the coaches or they introduce the groups.
Sounds great. I spoke today to our seniors and the parents during the honors banquet this morning, and looking at the accomplishments of this class of 2019, it's probably safe to say, and I know we've had the chance to say this times in the past, that it seems like with each graduating class, their accomplishments are the greatest in that four-year period of time. I think you can definitely say that with this class of 2019, that overall, the accomplishments that they have earned in their four years would rival any group, not just in Johnson Central's 50-year history, but any school in the state, just when you look at the number of regional, state, and national accomplishments that this group has had. So what we're gonna do here, we actually got several groups to go through, but let's start real quick. Coach Matt is with us, and of course, he is our wrestling and football coach. Both have had unparalleled success, especially in this senior class in the last four years, four consecutive state championship football games. Wrestling team earned the large school state dual championship, first time we've accomplished that, and was the KJSA state runner-up for the individual part of that competition. So just unbelievable season. I'll turn it over to you, and you can introduce the members you have here, Coach.
Okay, just real quickly here, I appreciate what the Board of Education has allowed us to do. I know a few years ago, they made a commitment to our athletic program, and no matter what you do, you always catch a little criticism, and we built a great facility, our board did, and our community. And this year will mark over $3 million in scholarship and grant and aids that our football players have received, and I don't know if we could have done it had our board not made that commitment to get us some nice facilities, just decent facilities. As you all know, the facilities were once good, and then they started falling down, and a lot of people don't realize that, they were actually falling to the ground. One coach disappeared under the sidewalk, only his head was sticking out, and one 15-foot section of the wall of the stadium fell down, right where the visitors would be walking out, so there would have been a lot of tragedies had they not made the commitment and done what they've done. So I really appreciate them, but over $3 million in scholarship and grant and aid money has gone to our football players and our wrestlers since then, so it's paid for itself several times. This year's been an exceptional year for any athletic program. First with our wrestling program, this year we were the state dual meet champions. Now what that means is, is dual meets is different than an individual tournament, in a dual meet, you take your team against another team. Our team against St. Xavier, our team against Campbell County, or our team against Christian County, all the big schools in the state. Some of them, like the Catholic schools, have over 2,000 boys, and so our little country boys going down there and defeating, not only defeating them, but we had every match locked up at 43 points. The closest, when you get 43 points in a wrestling match, that match is locked up, and we had every team in it at 43 points before they scored. So it was an amazing run, probably nothing like I'll ever see again in my career. We had several All-Staters, we got a couple of them here, Matt and Alex Horn, and one of them's not only All-Stater, one was the state wrestling champion. This year, we had two state wrestling champions, now you think about that, it's all in one class. It's not like, well, it's not like any other sport, or any other state hardly. All of our classes are in one, and we had two individual state champions. We may have had another, had Alex not got his shoulder dislocated, but anyway, it was just an absolute remarkable year, so I won't go on and on and on about all of them, but if you're a wrestler, would you kind of step forward here and just be acknowledged by the board? Would you go up and get, yeah, okay, they wanna get a picture here? We oughta have Mr. Pierce stand in for his son. His son was a two-time consecutive state heavyweight champion, and that's not done very often.
Here we go, count of three. One, two, three.
Which are they, is that football or wrestling?
Football, yeah.
I think they're all, those are wrestling. Yes, sir, you're correct. Those may be both, but yeah. The state sends you tokens of the championship, and so...
And just real quickly, on the football side, been an amazing run, four consecutive state championship games, appearances, and one state title. And when I first came here, we put a sign up on the locker room, and I tell this on Ronnie Fairchild at least once a year, but he said to me, he said, we was talking about winning, and I said, I'd sure like to win the district, and he said, district, he said, I'll let you drive the maintenance truck for a whole year if we just beat Paintsville. And that was, that was our goal then, you know, I said, oh, that sounds pretty good, but I thought, you know, I don't know if that's our goal, is just to beat Paintsville. And, you know, I was fortunate to have some coaches when I were young that had high goals. Two of them played in the NFL, and they just thought that it didn't matter where you were from, if you were from the head of the holler, that it didn't matter, that you were as good as anybody else. And they instilled that upon me, I hope, and I hope if nothing else, we're instilling that upon our kids, that no matter where you're from, that you're just as good as anybody else, and that you can compete. You know, our old coach had the old saying that everybody puts their jock on the same, and so I didn't really understand that till I got later, but, so this year's football team, I'm incredibly proud of them. Our sign said, whatsoever a man thinketh in his heart, so is he. That's the first sign we put up when I got here, and under it, I put, think district championship. And of course, we had only won, I believe, three games in four years before we got here. And as another commitment that came through our superintendent and our Board of Education, you know, they didn't have to go out and get a football coach. I believe we'd won three games, and I wrote that, we had a sign, and then somebody outdone me, they went underneath it, somebody put, think regional championship. And then we had a man here, Jack Richardson, who was head of Consaul Co., he come to me one day, and he said, that's not enough, he said, we need to be talking about a state championship. And I thought, Lord, Jack, we've only won four games in four years. He said, well, if you can't say it, you can't do it. So underneath that big sign we put up, day one, when I got here, we had think district championship, think regions championship, and think state championship. And so it's been a dream come true, something every day I wake up and I pinch myself, I can't hardly believe it, but I'll say this, there's no way that you can accomplish anything if you don't have a good administration, from the board to the principal, if you don't have good assistant coaches, and if you don't have some wives that are willing to give up some incredible time, it's unbelievable. And all that still would go for rot if you didn't have some great young men. I have found that great young men, great players, make coaches look better than what they are. So I think, more than anything, I think this tribute goes to our county, to the families and the young men who have made it to the state championship game four times. I don't know if it's ever been done by a county school, it's been done by private schools and independent schools, but I think maybe one other school in the state in the history of Kentucky has probably made it to four state, straight state championships as a county school. So anyway, I'm gonna shut up. If our football team, the guys that are here, if you guys would come on up, I know a good portion of our team are here, by the way, several of these kids have received scholarships this year, and several of them are on the radar to receive scholarships next year. Hold on now, he's gonna need to get yours. Say, thank you, Lord, on three. Oh, wait a minute, speaking of state champions, this is the two-time defending Kentucky state heavyweight champion.
We have to let it cross the table, everybody.
We can't say about him what the Paintsville fans said about me the first baseball game I came here after they hired me. She came up to me, and most of you all know who I'm talking about, and she looked at him, somebody said, I want to introduce you to our new football coach, Coach Matt, and she turned and she said, he don't look like much.
Guys, let's keep it on top, everybody go to the side of you, let's get y'all here. There we go, there we go, count of three, one, two, and three.
Thank you, Lord.
Oh, yeah, yeah, here's football, too. Guys, did everybody get your football medal?
Yeah.
Anybody?
You gotta get your medals, you're gonna get one.
You got a wrestling hat, everybody, you got a wrestling hat.
Yes, sir.
Can we go ahead and start?
Okay, also here with us, actually, we've had an awful lot of success here, and that success has not just been from athletic realm, we've had tremendous amount of success from our student organizations, and we have two of those here that have had great success at state level and are preparing for nationals. So first, we will let, we've got Mark Shepherd and Todd Conley, who are two of our sponsors with Skills USA. We'll give that over to them and let them talk about some of their accomplishments.
Before we talk about our kids, we also want to thank the board office, our principal, our CTE principal for having these opportunities for our kids. Our kids operate so many different career and technical pathways, that the state of Kentucky has no clue what we really offer inside of our building, and Skills USA gets an opportunity for all these kids to compete. We saw football, we saw wrestling, but these kids get to compete in quiz bowl, engineering, video broadcasting, numerous computer coding contests every year, and we usually come back with several state champions with us tonight. I'm gonna let the state champions introduce theirselves. First, we have our quiz bowl, who will be going to nationals and looking to win a national title. The last time our quiz bowl team went to national competition, we came back with a national title. So if our quiz bowl, introduce yourself.
I'm Gary Cantrell.
I'm Brandon Fairchild.
I'm Joelyne Fairchild.
Zoe Castle.
They're here, state champions in quiz bowl, makes up a lot of our academic team kids who do some quick recall, but it's also a career and technical aspect, that the questions are not just like academic questions, they also have a lot of relevance to career and technical education. We also have our engineering, technology, and design team here, if they'd stand up and introduce theirselves.
I'm Douglas Briggs.
Dalton Castle.
How does it feel?
They created a product from scratch, where they worked with computer-aided drafting, fabrication, and created an item that they actually are able to manufacture wood-burnt car scent holders, that they can replenish the scent to. It's pretty cool, it's a really, really neat thing, customizable as well. We also have an extemporaneous speaker here, we're not gonna put him on the floor too much, because he will extemporaneously speak about anything.
My name's Elijah Conley, and that's about it.
That's not about it. The kid is a two-year state officer for Skills USA, which you have to meet a high curriculum. We also have another, what'll be starting their second-year state officer in Castle, so he will be our, he will be our second two-time state officer, starting next year. A state-only event that we do is called Group Talent, so a lot of schools will send a group down to compete in a talent contest, either single or group. We went down, and our group had a few people added to some of our quiz bowl students, so if our group talent would stand up and introduce yourself.
So Gary Cantrell again.
You gotta tell your instrument, though, whenever you do this.
Bass.
Okay.
I'm Jackson Ratliff, I play the guitar.
I'm Drew Sumbo, I play piano.
So not only are our technical education kids phenomenal in the classroom, but talent-wise, some of these kids you'll see at the Mountain Heart Center doing different things. The array of talent that this group of kids, they have, us being able to put it on demonstration for everybody in the state, we could not do it without the support of our Board of Education, understanding that traveling kids to global, to compete in state competitions, traveling them back to national competitions, and then our career and technical principal, Monica Daniel, and Noel Crum being there, giving every kid an opportunity to do what they're good at, so thank you all for...
Get a picture, Mark, how'd y'all get in, too?
All of you.
You got all dressed up? Yeah, go right in behind again.
Hey, we're heavy on that side. Get right in between you. There we go. Alright, here we go, count of three, right here, one, two, three.
Okay, our last group is gonna recognize, I'm going to do my best on this, and I'll need the help of some of the students, because Ms. Castle, her daughter's competing in the district tournament tonight in softball, and she had to get on over to INES, so she sent me some information, and that is our HOSA. This group has had really unparalleled success year after year, and I want to let each of them, as a matter of fact, to make it a little easier, I mean, any of you that are HOSA, come on up this way, and I'll go ahead and give you some information as they walk up here. HOSA internationals are gonna be June 18th to 23rd in Orlando. We've got state champions here with us, and I will let, I know three of them here also need to talk a little bit about their vape-out program that has received statewide acclaim and has really, has really made a difference, I think, all the way around, but let's start here, and I think we've probably heard you a few times, but go ahead and tell, and tell what you did, also tell what you competed in as well.
Gary Cantrell and Ming and...
Nahia Ward.
JP Dogg is out here, but we all, we went HOSA Bowl, state competition.
I'm Dalton Woody, and my teammates, Kobe Little and Logan Woody, my brother, competed in community awareness with the issue of vaping e-cigarettes, and we actually had some resolutions, and bills passed by the Kentucky State Senate, making February 28th vape-out day in Kentucky.
That's great. And all of them will be competing in Orlando, so great accomplishment, if y'all want to come around, let's get a picture of you all as well here. As I said earlier, it's unbelievable when you step back and look at the broad accomplishments of our students, I mean, it's amazing.
Alright, here we go. Count of three, one, two, three.
Okay, and in continuing our theme of celebrations, I have a couple more groups or individuals I want to celebrate and recognize. First, we were talking about our Golden Eagle Awards. As you know, each month, we give one certified and one classified Golden Eagle Award to a member of our eagle family who go above and beyond Call of Duty, and who put the kids first, and really are true golden eagles. This month's certified award winner, this recipient has over 25 years' experience working with students in grades nine through 12, ranging from special needs all the way to dual credit. Serving all varieties of students, he has had great success having students go into college, the workforce, and the military. With a passion for teaching humanities, media, speech, writing, and literature, this recipient treats students with respect while still having high expectations that they function independently. He prepares students by having them follow a syllabus, check email, and be an active participant in the classroom. Help me congratulate certified Golden Eagle Award recipient, who also has a cartwheel that would rival any Olympic contender, Dr. Stephen H. Stacks. I didn't think we was gonna get him up here. I want you to stay here, let me, let me, I jumped ahead myself, I do want to mention that the Golden Eagle Award is actually made by our students at Johnson High School, just another great thing that they do. One of our engineering departments, they design, and they print this, the eagle using 3D print, and then our art department does the painting, and it's sponsored each month by Castle Jewelry, who provides the base, so that makes the eagle even more special. Alright, thank you. Now, for our classified recipient, this Golden Eagle Award winner has only been employed with the school system for three years, but has made a huge impression on the students and staff around him. He's always quick to help any group he is traveling with by supervising, serving meals, and packing luggage, along with many other things. He takes time to know every child and honestly cares about their welfare, known degree kids with a smile and a good morning. This recipient takes pride in what he does and makes a conscious effort to be a positive influence in the lives of the students he comes into contact with. A perfect example of the exceptional qualities demonstrated by the Golden Eagle Award. Congratulations to bus driver John Fairchild. How you want, man, with Steve? Here we go, count of three, guys. One, two, three. And now, we have one more group to recognize, and I won't, I won't speak individually about about these members, but I can say that in looking through this list, there are a lot of stories I can share about every one of you, but I do want to say that, that you will all be desperately missed. Everybody that I'm gonna talk about here, you are the backbone and you are the glue, and for several years, anywhere from six years up to 40 years of service, you have been what has driven the success of Johnson County Schools. And what we're going to do is just a small token, and we cannot give you nearly what you deserve, but we do want to recognize you and honor you in front of the board meeting and in front of our board members. So I am going to announce our retirees for this, who will be, the individual will be retiring at the end of this year. Several of you are here, some are not here, I will call everyone's name, when I call your name, please come up, accept your certificate, and just a small token of our appreciation, and stay here for a group picture, okay? And again, thank you for all that you do. Well, again, first, 12 years of service, Ms. Opal Angel Blevins. We are presenting everyone with a certificate, as well as a, a small paperweight, an apple in the Golden Eagle color. Thank you. Next, 27 years of service, Nikki Bowley. Next, with 40 years of service. Forty-two? Ms. Pam Burton. Forty-four-five. Next, with 27 years of service, Ben Hamilton. With 11 years of service, and I'm not sure she's here, Ms. Deborah Houser. She's not here, okay? With 27 years of service, Jeff Horn. With six years of service, Ms. Brenda Gerald. Don't tell your tales. Alright, I won't, I won't, I won't. With 32 years of service, Connie Jones. With 27 years of service, Eric Lotterwasser. Also with 27 years of service, he's unable to be here with the state, Greta Meek. And with 27 years of service, also unable to be here, Carolyn Sloan. With 18 years of service, Deborah Sturgill. With 28 years of service, Rhonda Sturgill. With 28 years of service, Virginia Tackey. And with 25 years of service, Deborah Wiley. As I said earlier, I want to thank each of you for your service, through your dedication, for representation of Johnson County Schools and Most of All, for doing what you did out of love for our students. Any one of you, and I don't want to put you on the spot, anyone want to say anything? Have a, have a word? Okay, if not, can we get a? And we've gotta get a lot tighter if we can. Everybody, everybody show the love here. Let's get you real tight. Yeah, get behind the board members. Yeah, we're kind of covering them up.
Well, they're gonna stand up.
Oh, they're gonna stand, never mind, never mind. They're gonna stand up, just stay here and sponsor. Let them slide in, but we'll have to get back. Yeah, it's not gonna work. I'll just get behind them. You can't see that there's the table with too much.
Alright, let's try to get behind them. Come on around behind them.
Yeah, Brandon could lay down though. She would do it. Yeah, that's what'll look like, man. Oh yeah, that looks real good. That's gonna be good. Alright, here we go. Count of three, guys. One, two, three. And thank you all.
Next on the agenda is to approve the minutes from April 22nd, 2019, on the rubber meeting and bills unpayable through May 16th, 2019, as per a motion to do so.
So may.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item five, renovation report, Mr. Adams. I have with me CMTA, I have Trevor Combs and Tim Hong Smith, and they'd like to go over briefly the six-month of our performance contract to date, so Trevor, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Absolutely. So for those of you that don't know me, Trevor Combs, with CMT Energy Solutions. We did the recent performance contract here in Johnson County. I'd like to take this opportunity to go back through briefly the, the scope of what we did, some information on why we did it, and then show how we calculate our energy savings, and then where we're actually at. So this is the, this is the fun part of my job, is coming back to the school districts where we completed, to show you all how much energy we've actually saved beyond what we actually guaranteed. So, I'll go through it. The project had a couple of main scope items in them. The first main one being coal boiler replacement. So when we first got here, working with Tim and, and a lot of the maintenance guys, it being pretty clear that these, these boilers, you're one of the last, I believe, seven school districts in the state that still heat with coal boilers. And I know that it was becoming clear that they required a lot of time, a lot of the maintenance items, I don't think that a lot of these parts you can buy anymore, so a lot of custom parts, a lot of time and energy to keep these up and running. I know Tim, a lot of his guys are spending nights and weekends, so that was a big headache on the district, so we've replaced them. Every coal boiler in the district, all 11 of them, are now replaced with high-efficiency natural gas boilers. Just a robust, efficient way to heat the schools. On top of that, the walls of Central Elementary, there were three pods there that have open concept classrooms. So there's four classrooms in one big room, no walls. So when you walk in there, there's four teachers trying to teach a class, all at the same time, it's, it's hard for them to teach. Light levels are fairly low, so we came in, added walls to create four distinct classrooms, redid the ceilings, the floor and the corridor, along with all the LED lights, and they're now switched individually so that each teacher can control their classroom individually, which allows a much better learning environment for the students. Next big item to address was the bathrooms in Johnson County Middle School. From my understanding, the original of the building, the, the piping had issues and constantly needed to be maintained. Plumbing fixtures, you can see here some of the walls and the ceilings had issues, so we partnered with Sherman Carter Barnhart, your preferred architect, to do a complete top-to-bottom bathroom renovation. So this is floors, walls, ceilings, new fixtures, all the plumbing has been repaired as well. It's a brand-new bathroom that you would see if you were building a brand-new school. We also upgraded to LED lighting across the district, so every school and building in the district now has LED lights, which is a highly efficient, a higher output type of lighting to help the district. These are some examples of what it looked like beforehand. This, you can see, the gymnasium in the left corner is WR Castle, and this is Porter Cafeteria. You can see the light levels are improved, and it's helped the performance of the district dramatically in terms of their electricity usage. This is the existing HVAC controls. You can see here, screenshot from what the controls used to look like, and you've got... Those are what they look like beforehand. Screenshot showing that there were issues, the red here, on, on what the controls used to have, and these are some examples of the older thermostats. Older technology, it's not as accurate, leading to HVAC concerns. What we did is we upgraded Johnson Central Elementary to complete new controls, and a large portion of the high school got brand-new controls. We took the controls from the rest of the schools and brought them into one web-based system, so that as long as you've got a laptop and you've got internet access, you can take a look at these controls right there. You've got a building floor plan for each school, showing, at quick glance, exactly how comfortable that building is. Green means exactly where it needs to be. This light yellow is a good example of, of a room that's cooling down, so it's on its way towards more comfortable. This here shows a unit breakdown, exactly what the components are in a unit, which for us may not matter a whole lot, but for the maintenance guys, they can pull that unit up, if they get a complaint, take a look, say, "I think something's wrong with that component," grab it at their shop, take it with them to go have it repaired, and it allows it to be much more efficient in their maintenance. So, you guys mainly want to know, except how much energy we saved. Before I do that, I want to explain exactly how that's done. So this is a copy, just a screenshot of Porter's utility bill. So, it looks probably a lot like the utility bill that you get at your home. And if I were to tell you, "We're gonna save you energy from your home unit," you would go and take a look at what you spent last year in your bill, and what you spent this year, and compare the two. That's exactly what we do here, and it's the basis for all of our calculations, is just real information straight from utility bills. No calculations, except for addition, subtraction, that kind of stuff. So that's the basis of that. If anybody's ever had any questions, they're more than happy to give me a call, and I can walk them through it. So this is a chart showing the electricity usage of the entire district on one chart. And I see this every day, but I'll walk you through the exact details. So it's showing the first six months. We had 12 months of construction, and now we're six months past that, so we have 18 months since we came into the district. The red line here is the baseline. That's the two-years average that we took of how you all were performing, in terms of how much energy you used prior to us coming on the site. This black line here, say it's over 12 months, you can see here that it sums up, and black line here is a target for our guarantee. And as long as the energy consumption of where we're at now is below that line, the guarantee's met, you'll have enough money to pay for that, the bond payment, to allow the project to have happened in the first place. You can see here, the first six months in green are below our guarantee by a considerable amount. Forty percent reduction in total below what you all used to spend in KWH, or your electricity consumption. So that's the way we, we look at it, to show that to you all very simply, we're meeting exactly what we said we would. Same thing for electrical demand, which is the other component of electricity. We're not quite as far below the guarantee as we were in consumption, but we're still 23 percent below. Same exact chart, past that, in terms of your fuel, which is natural gas or propane. And in red, it was the coal usage, and now we're here in natural gas, and green, with a very large reduction in that, in terms of 60 percent reduction for your heating usage. Now, to actually talk about dollar values, the construction year savings, which is the 12 months, as we were getting all the systems lined out and up and running, we saved money during that year, $227,000. With the year one, the first six months past that added an additional $145,000 worth of savings, to result in a $373,000 savings of these 18 months combined. Now, that seems like a lot of money, but there's also a payment to be made with that. We take that savings minus the bond payments you all made so far, $308,000 of bond payments, to achieve an excess savings of $64,000 in the general fund today. So, and just to be clear, that bond payment is a, comes from the general fund. So through this procurement process, we are not touching the restricted funds in any ways, and we're strictly creating an opportunity within your own general fund to pay back this project. So, it just shows that Tom and Tim were very good stewards with how they spent the district's money to pursue this alternate funding method, so that you all have your restricted funds to choose, to do what you want with for additional capital needs. I just want to say thank you for you all to let CMT be your partner in this. You guys got any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, might be Mr. Adams.
Uh, this, I recommend we make the payment to Sherman Carter Barnhart. Again, this keeps us on line with the DFP that we're, we're in the process of doing, and the construction that we're trying to get, get into at this point. So my recommendation is to make this payment.
Thank you. So motion approved. Second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? There'll call for, there'll be no objection, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six A, Mr. Goble.
I presented the first draft of the budget back in January for fiscal year 20, and this is the next step in the budget development process that I presented to the board and LA. This is the tentative working budget. I'll present my final working budget to the board in September, though it's usually after the tax rates are set by the board. The tentative budget provides a more defined picture of estimated revenues and expenditures than the budget I presented in January. The SEB base, we have an estimate that was put out February 28th, there'll be another one coming soon. But that estimates SEB funding at $4,000 per student, and you'll know SEB is our largest revenue source. That amount budgeted is $17,600,645. And I'm not sure that that'll change with our next forecast, but it often does. And all the other budget, all the other revenues in the budget are, they have little or no change, they're based on historical estimates. On the expenditure side, I budgeted the salary fringe, based on the rank and experience allocated for fiscal year 19. There's still some things that we don't know. We'll have our step and some rank increases that'll come in. Maintenance and transportation costs, those are based, budgeted based on prior year history and trend data. And there are still some things that we don't know. We won't know our beginning balance until the year is closed and all those final expenditures come in. And we haven't set a tax rate yet, and those are two very important things that we're about to do. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. I just need the board's approval on this tentative budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval to adopt the 2019-2020 tentative budget as presented by Finance Officer, Sir Misty Goble?
So may.
Motion's been made, second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, Six B, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, I'm asking for the approval of the 1920 district technology plan.
Thank you. Sir, motion for approval to accept that technology plan as presented.
So may.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, Six C, Mr. Burge.
We're asking approval of the 2019-20 salary schedules as presented in your...
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? If not, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, Mr. Cockman.
Back last semester, we were presented the opportunity to create another JAG job to make graduate position at Johnson County Middle School. That middle school job has created so much success and student interest and potential growth for students, that they have come back to us and wanted to give us a... growth for students, that they have come back to us and wanted to give us another position for freshmen who are leaving the middle school, and we want to continue it to freshman year. So I'm asking your approval for another position provided by JAG through the MOU.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six E, Mr. Fairchild.
We have two outside groups that would like to utilize district school buses, one being Special Olympics on Jim the First, the other group is the Forage on the 29th of May. They'll pick up all expenses for the driver and the bus.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Motion's made, and second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the concession bid, Mr. Goble.
We ask the board to award the concession bid to McClure Vending.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Misty, the suffering bid.
We ask the board to accept low price per item and accept McClure Vending's percentage quote for full service spending.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six H, Mr. Goble.
We ask the board to approve on fuel, tires, and best parts. Fuel, the recommendation is fuel, contact suppliers upon need to obtain the lowest price per load of fuel. Lubricants, items three through five, accept low bid per item. And on tires... Low bid per item, best repair parts. Low bid per item.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve low bids? Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Young and Noel Crum.
Mr. Young had a step, they have a play at WR Castle, he has requested the board permission to use WR Castle for the Brown family reunion. All documents are in order in the draft.
Thank you.
And for Johnsons, are you doing together?
Yeah, that's fine.
Johnson Central's just the Classic 74 reunion on August 17th.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve both? Second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item six J, Mr. Fairchild.
We're asking the board to reject the bids for the used buses from Kissimmee.
Thank you, is there a motion to reject those bids?
So made.
Motion is made, second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. There'll be no discussion, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six K, Mr. Adams.
We have a fairway mower that we're asking permission to sell, they're using it about a month out of the year, and we feel like that we can sell that, we can utilize something else for the baseball softball team, that'll be more beneficial to the district.
Thank you.
And also, we're asking for technology items to be sold, it's essentially all computers. We have a state contract through CATS for a company called eScrap that can purchase those based on their contract.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve both items?
So made.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item six L, Mr. Cochran.
As you approved previously to reject the Kissimmee bids, we are asking the board to authorize a district option for those school buses and any other surplus items that we need to sell.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six M, Mr. Goble.
I'm asking for approval for continuation of the finance officers and treasurer's call.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve this?
So made.
Second? Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six N, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve the Kentucky School Plan Management Association MOU that will, they provide a service to allow us to continue monitoring our monthly energy bills, and to, and that service will also allow them, if there is a spiking deal, to contact the utility company question to determine the need, or determine the cost of that, and see what we can do to keep that cost low.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six O, Ms. Coleman.
We're asking to be able to continue with the community eligibility provision under the National School Lunch Program, that is what allows us for each student to get a free breakfast and lunch regardless of the household income.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six P, Mr. Crum.
We've got several activities here for the summer, you have boys' basketball, girls' soccer, wrestling, football, and girls' basketball, and if you have all those dates there in front of you, we'd ask approval for those summer trips.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve student trips?
Will move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Six Q, Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah, this is a equipment addendum for the DataCing sites and design label agreement we had with DataCing, and they will be providing seventy-five IMAX for us to use within the district.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Also in your packet, you have superintendent's personnel report, and I would like to thank all of you for doing what you do to make our school system what it is. It's been an awesome year, couldn't do without the parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and each and every one of you, from the cooks, bus drivers, to principals, superintendents, and all the teachers and the board. So thank you for a great school year. With that said, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Like everybody, show the part, we've got softball starting at six o'clock, girls will be playing McGolfin County.